Good evening. This is the city of Pleasantville, Mississippi. Today's date is December 4th, 2023. Time is starting at 2:00 P.M. This meeting has been duly advertised by the city's newspaper. It's called Green Act, otherwise known as Sunshine Law. Roll call?
Davenport.
Present.
February 11th. Thomas. Present. Gamona.
Present.
Coria.
Present.
Clay.
Present.
Sishtrow.
Present.
Sixon.
The chair most of the previous minutes. Loop, second. On favor.
Hi.
All right, Sam. Then we have this presentation for the president of the municipal alliance.
Good evening, everyone. Council, mayor, district minister. Thank you for this opportunity. So most of you know that my name is Cara and my role here at the city of Pleasantville is the administrative secretary. But additionally to that role, I also serve as the coordinator for the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance. And so for some of you that may not know what the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance is, it is a program that I believe has been a part of the city for over 20 years way before I got here. And it's state-funded in Chicago, which is the Governor's Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. And what the state program does, it funds our local alliance with a few community programming within the community, which are drug and alcohol prevention programming. So I'm just going to take a second just to name some of the programs such as Life Skills, which is Atlantic Prevention Service. They serve our local schools. Students of Mentoring, which is also an elementary school program. Outreach Mentoring, Pleasantville Recreation Center, Joker's Youth Football Organization, and also Community Awareness, which the alliance will represent in any of our city community events, which we have had representation out there. So today, it brings me a distinct honor to actually acknowledge the retirement of someone who was very near and dear to the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance. And I have to say that, Ms. Sherleene, I embellished a little bit. You are not here tonight to meet the new chairperson, the alliance chairperson. You're actually here tonight to be honored for your resignation. So I'm going to ask if you could come forward at this time. And I'm going to officially introduce everyone. And I'm going to ask Ms. Avant if she can come stand beside me. Thank you, Ms. Avant. Ms. Sherleene, yes, I know. Come closer. Ms. Sherleene, to our council, she has served the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance for over 20 years. And she has been... I asked Ms. Avant to stand with me because unfortunately tonight, the other program coordinators weren't able to attend tonight, but we actually have Ms. Sherleene's husband, who is here also to acknowledge. Okay, council president is asking if you can stand, Mr. Sam. Thank you.
And don't leave because I got a six. I'm too cuddly.
So Ms. Avant, who's actually has been a part of the alliance just as long, but Ms. Sherleene has been a strong advocate for the drug and alcohol prevention program. And she retired officially in October. And so the alliance, on behalf of the city of Pleasantville and the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance, wanted to acknowledge you and acknowledge your retirement by presenting you with this wonderful plaque. And I'll read. It says, "Sherleene Spence Stewart, on behalf of the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance, thank you for 21 years of leadership, community service, outreach programming, and commitment to advocating drug and alcohol prevention. Presented to you December 4th, 2023, on behalf of the Pleasantville Municipal Alliance." Thank you, Ms. Sherleene. Just a few words before we go back over to the council president. I know. She's never speechless. Yes. Thank you. And I don't know what to say. It's nothing. Something that happened. Thank you, mayor.
No, anybody who thinks same. Yes, I'd just like to say something to you. You can come back up to the mic, please. Stop crying for a minute.
Ms. Sherleene, I just want to say thank you for all your service. God bless you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your retirement.
And I'm still here for Pleasantville.
Councilwoman.
Amen.
Ms. Sherleene, you know, I love you. I want to say congratulations on your retirement and thanks for serving our city for over 21 years.
Thank you for serving our city for 21 years. God bless you and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you very much for your service. You show that we are still good people in our community. May God bless you.
Thank you for your service and dedication. Thank you, Ms. Sherleene.
Thank you.
And I thank you for your service and your dedication. 21 years is a long time. And I see you brought your husband out here too, just for everybody's needs. Can you just stand for a second? That was my old army recruiter. They're like, he's still around, my man. He told me I was going to be air traffic controller. I'm glad you're there looking out for your wife and took care of it. God bless you in your steps and God bless you in your retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Sherleene. I wish you well. I know. Thank you, Ms. Sherleene. Yes, I know you'll be happy and he'll take good care of you. He's been here a long time and he worked hard for the kids and I appreciate that. So God bless him.
Don't turn away yet of our big chair.
Yes.
The significance of this for us is that Pleasantville Municipal Alliance is one of the leaders under the Atlantic County program. And it's because of the efforts of Sherleene Stewart, Ms. Avant Moody, who's been around for a long time, and of course, our coordinator Cara Jorrell. So I think they all deserve a round of applause for the work that they do. To teach them and help them become aware about the detrimental effects of drug and alcohol abuse. That's not an easy task that they do. They work with various grassroots organizations to make sure that our funding is put to use, that our kids are become aware of the programming that is out there. So we, you know, that I dearly love you and thank you for all of your efforts and I'm glad to see that you are being recognized tonight for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. Next is a capital improvement report by...
Sure, hard to follow that. Mayor, council president, and council members. So we prepared a report to see...
Can you give your names?
Oh, sorry. Lauren Newman with City Associate City Engineer. Our latest report is dated December 1st. A lot of projects you'll see have either been completed or in a closeout phase or are expected to be out of design phase by the end of the first quarter of 2024, starting with pump station. It's good now? All right. So the first item is the pump station improvements. This is various improvements, the pump stations throughout the city. The design will be completed by the end of the first quarter of 2024. And just noted that this project is funded through the Infrastructure Trust. The generator at the rec center, again, as I reported... No, this is various ones, the backup generator at Dowdy, a combinator at California Avenue, connection, trash baskets. It's really just improvements at our existing pump stations. The next item, the generator at the rec center, as I previously reported, that was ordered but had a very long lead time. And that's where that remains heading into the DOT funded. This is where you see a lot of projects have in fact been substantially completed and/or will be ready to move into construction for 2024.
Any questions?
Yeah.
I know it's been ordered, right? So how much more longer do you expect?
It was 40 to 42 weeks by prior reporting, so it should be close to being ready. I'm trying to remember. I last reported September. So 30, 60, I mean, it's probably close because we're beyond 40, 42 weeks. Linda, is there someone I can directly follow up with on that?
Yeah, I'll get you contact information.
Great, I'll follow up. Ansley Boulevard, again, work substantially complete. That's in punch list and closeout with DOT. Decatur Avenue also substantially complete. Contractors are debt addressing punch list items and then a movement to closeout. There were various improvements on Tunis, Harrison, and Prospect that has been completed. That project remains on maintenance bond. Downey Road Phase 1, that is basically what I call a settlement period. So the utility work has been completed. It undergoes roughly a 90-day settlement period, which will take us through this winter, and that will be final paved in the spring. And then the contractor will address any punch list items. Downey Road Phase 2, that project has been completed. We have awarded that contract and the contractor is expected to mobilize and start that work in December. And again, likely won't see substantial completion on that until summer because that'll also have a settlement period. Streetscape along Black Horse Pipe, that project design is complete, will be advertised this week, and we would anticipate making a recommendation to council to award that contract in the January council meeting. Streetscape improvements along Old Turnpike, that is substantially complete. That is in a project addressing punch list items and closeout with the DOT. Save routes to school, that's just a decision as to whether or not the city will go through the Design Assistance Program. As it relates to municipal aid, Bridgewood Avenue and Clematis, that project will be expected to be finished design first quarter of 2024. That project was delayed because it had a sewer component. That's going to be funded through the Infrastructure Trust. The lighting improvements along the bike path, that project is to be awarded. It's in the design phase. It doesn't have to be awarded till December 11th of 2024. Yes.
I'm sorry. How far does that go on the bike path? Do you have any ideas?
It's Decatur to Mahon.
Okay, good.
We were awarded DOT funds for improvements along Green Street. Again, that project has to be awarded by December 11th of 2024 and is in design phase. Improvements to South Franklin Boulevard and East Bayview, that project is in the design phase at this time. That has a series of funding sources associated with it. Stonewall to permit update, the only update I want to provide that isn't noted here is that the DEP did pass new regulations and will require an update to the ordinance by July of 2024. So that will be pending, not yet. The assessment for the roads report, that we expect to be completed this month and we'll provide that report to council. The Lakeside Park, that is underway. Project construction obviously has started, will continue through the spring. Princeton Avenue, so we are receiving quotes for some of that work that had to do with some water improvements and then the need for repave post those. As it relates to the gymnasium floor, we have submitted a proposal for that. The city was awarded CDBG funds for park improvements at Leeds Avenue and Max Manning as well as Crescent Avenue Park. That project we expect to be completed within the first quarter of 2024. We had done due diligence and submitted a proposal to see if, to use the existing building at Park Avenue, West Park Avenue for a senior center community building that that remains pending direction from council. That is essentially my report at this time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I do have another question. Ms. Peyton, as far as that in rec center, because we haven't gotten any information from the council about, I mean, are they putting the same type of floor back down or are they putting the wooden floor? Is there going to be any difference between the wooden floor? Any other questions?
Thank you. I hope everyone has an happy holiday season. You should.
Excuse me, Ms. Peyton, I have one more question. As far as with the senior center building, I mean, where is that? It says West Park Avenue, but what building are they using?
So we're a state lighting engineer. We're still in a due diligence phase. This was a PERS Act grant that was awarded to the city a few years ago in an amount of over $500,000 for a facility for usage for, what do you call it? Emergencies, yeah. That wasn't a word, but that's helpful. Thank you. But with that being said, the initial grant was for the current recreation center, but they had, there was a lot of green acreage issues to expand in that area. So the application was redone and submitted for West Park Avenue, which is a old shed that is out there that is not owned by the city, but the site is something that we were looking at when we put in the application. And that is where we are. It has not been purchased. There has been no other information other than an appraisal done on the building to see what that looks like.
That's the big building rented by railroad trucks across the graveyard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? Next is the general.
First is ordinance number 26, second reading, public care indoor residential session. They take the portion of Ansley Boulevard pursuant to the Lakeside Development Plan as amended.
It's a second reading. It's a second reading. You want for the public to speak to this?
Virginia.
Oh, I'm sorry. Question?
Okay, ordinance number 27, second reading, public care indoor residential session dedicating certain public lands located in the city known as Block 245, Block 10.
Any questions?
Resolution 161, extending the hours of the sale of plenary retail distribution liquor licenses on the Sunday 24th and 31st of 2023.
What is the hours?
Well, the last time we did this resolution was 2017, so these two holidays fall on Sunday. So our ordinance allows liquor sale at noon. This will allow it to be open at 9:00 a.m.
Have any questions, Chair?
Yes.
So on normal days, what time do they open?
On Sundays, they open at noon. So this is only for Sundays, for the holidays. So they're asking to be...
Noon on Sundays, but do you know brightening?
Brightening days, I believe it's 9:00 or 10:00.
Any more questions?
Council president, and this is just for this year.
This is just for this year.
Only because the holidays is falling on Sunday.
Sunday, yes, about Sunday. Okay. Questions, next is bill lists.
Good evening. We're here with the bill that we're paid between this council meeting and this council meeting. The one that topped, most of those were, had to do with the winter winter land. That was last Friday. As you'll see in the middle, you'll see one to Port Jefferson Fire District. We purchased a used fire truck to replace one that was just dying. It's in the, I believe, early 2000s. They drove it down from New York. They had no problem. It's been certified, pressure tested, and the fire department was happy about it. We, they will, it will need two tires that are at the end of their life expectancy. These are fire trucks, they have certain life expectancy for the tires. They're going to have to replace two tires. Mark Raymond from the fire department was able to track this thing down and he went up and took a look at it. Their hot view is that in here that is working, it's in the firehouse right now.
Question, Chair?
Yes.
What year is this fire truck?
I believe it's early 2000, but only got like 27,000 miles on it.
Early 2000?
Early 2000. So the one we're looking to buy, which is a brand new one, is a little over a million. So they were very happy with this. It's a stopgap for a fire truck for the one they have is American LeFonce's.
Excuse me, Ms. Lynn. Where are we at? Trying to find out.
Right in the middle of...
It's your revised bill list that you are...
Checks that were paid between this council meeting and this one. Does he check right, right in the middle to Port Jefferson Fire District?
Gotcha. Thank you.
And then the other one that... You got it?
Yeah, gotcha. Thanks.
And the other was the big paycheck, it was a paycheck from last Friday.
Back to the fire, back to the fire truck. Is that the first time we ever got a purchase equipment from another municipality or somewhere? Because I know we did it before, years ago.
The first time since I've been here.
Yeah, first time.
But when we do that, it's usually under recommendation of the department we're buying. We were at one point looking at one from, I think, somewhere in Anna County. They backed out of it at the last second. So Mark Raymond was on the hunt to find something that was reasonable, reliable. We made him give all the certifications because you could have bought it a whole cheaper for like $25,000, but they were not certified. Pump test was good. So his decision was, and through my, I said, we'll pay $27,000 rather than pay $4,000 for us to repair one if that working. So that was the decision to go with the $27,000.
I know, yeah, a company works at fixed equipment and outdated equipment before and probably before you. We give the police cars, we ship police cars, police cars to Mississippi. So all that stuff, that's part of, I guess, a part of the system that works.
Sometimes you get something new that works well, sometimes you get...
Don't get that, Chair. I have a question, another question. Did we get a warranty for this fire truck? Is there some type of...
We have certification, we got the certification that the pump, pressure pump, is good and that's what they wanted. They, they had, our guy went up and looked at it.
Vegas in.
Some bar fire people went up and looked at it and worried for havoc with it. They called, they said he caught on ease of it. He saw no oil leaks, no, no problem with the oil. They ran back from Long Island, down here with no problem at all. And once they're looking to be approved, you should have a revised bill list. We'll go into revisions, revisions in a second. These are bills we're looking to be approved for payment. If you go to page two, you'll see down three from the bottom, Fred Dean's 40. We were able to buy four pickup trucks through state contract for TPW. This was a last minute ad because we weren't expecting the trucks till sometime next week. They're coming tomorrow morning at 10:30. They're bringing in four. The ones we have that are being replaced, one of them has a cracked frame, one needs a transmission, and the others are been 15, 18, 20 years old with 150,000 to 200,000 miles on it.
Served a purpose. I said it served a purpose.
Yes.
Question, Chair. Are these new trucks?
They're brand new trucks.
Okay, thank you.
They're F-150 crew caps, seat four people, two doors with a, I believe they all have six foot, two have six foot, two have eight foot beds on them.
Two doors or four?
Four doors. Two doors each side, four doors. That way you can bring more than one person with them. And then if you want to go back to page one, let's get that one. Starting, it says 106 South Main Street. This is the time that we reimburse the condominiums, apartment complexes for trash services based on Mount Orville, Mount Orville Station from a number of years ago that were required to reimburse them for, to the intact bills, pickup for trash, they pick them up, we have to reimburse them. There's certain criteria that we don't reimburse. I mean, we will pay for pickup and trash. We don't pay for, they have bulk pickups. If they have a service charge involved with the trash, there's a number of things in the trash bill that we don't pay for. Fuel adjustments, administrative fees, replacement of this, replacement of that, bulk pickup, we will only pay for rental of the dumpsters. And there's a number of them that you'll see if you go through here. If you go back to page two, the very top, Command Cup, this is Draw 3, the Joker's Field construction re, property.
Chair, is this the old Joker's Field?
Yeah, the old Joker's Field. The community park?
Yes, yes.
I started naming it the community park so then we're all on the same page.
Throws the all of them still. Obviously, how many more do we have? How many more?
Well, this suits now, I think the bid was like 3.2, can't guess where now like a million, like six, we paid up. Looking at money, we're halfway through, depending on what's going on.
Looks good down here, too.
Looks very nice. If you go through there, page three, page four, there's a number of reimbursements for trash removal, everything from the bottom on page three, the matter group. Top of page four, the manner apartments, Scottland Apartments in the middle of page four. And if you go to page five, you'll see, starting from the top, biking termites, they were a grant through the state of New Jersey for a spot of lantern flies that they went out and, I think, did three times in different areas of the community. And the bottom eight, where these are all employees that opted out of their medical and by contract and by our policy there entitled to $5,000, the half of what it would cost us, or $5,000 is the max. So you'll see everybody had $5,000. There's one who had single coverage. This was a $3,000 reimbursement for opt out payments.
I have a few more questions. Peyton, as far as the bike and trim ring, because I know we were dealing with that, how's that, how's it, I mean, is it working out? I know, because I know it's spreading throughout the city, we had one on my yard all over the place, but those places that we dealt with, are they...
Yeah, we've seen a tremendous decrease. We haven't had any issues from the neighbors with that increase of it. Again, they did an excellent job, as Barry stated, they went out on three different occasions, I guess, you spray once and then you wait a while, go back and be repeated a few times. So I think the locations that were selected by DEW were good locations because they were highly invested and it seems to be working.
All we want to do is to get that charitable.
If there's grant money available, this is a grant.
Yes, exactly. You have questions?
Council president?
Yes.
I just have a question just out of curiosity because I'm actually in the middle of a litigation with another client right now. Your condominium trash reimbursement, is that, are you doing that by agreement or is it pursuant to the Municipal Services Act?
Pursuant to Municipal Services Act.
Okay, so you have no agreements with any of them just because at some point in time you were advised that you needed to reimburse them on, you're doing it on an annual basis?
We do it on an annual basis, based on prior year expenses.
Do you have anything in writing with them, some type of MOA or MOU to establish that this is what we're going to do, pick up your, your trash, but not your recycling or, you know, whatever it is?
We don't, actually, we don't pick up any of it.
You're just providing them with dumpsters?
We provide a reimbursement based on... We provide a reimbursement based on Municipal Services.
I'm sorry, you're providing the reimbursement and you're picking it up?
You don't pick any.
But you don't have any type of, and not that you have, I'm just curious. You have, okay, all right.
But when they do question, I can refer to the law about what we will pay or not repay at time of even, then I have copy of Municipal Services Act.
Okay, okay, because with new, if they have a management company, you know, sometimes a new condominium boards and they come in, then they may not know what the past practices are in the attempt to change.
I run in that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Next, the public portion. Anyone from the public who wants to speak on Agenda Iron is an Agenda Iron only. Come forward. One time, one minute, three minutes at the mic. Let's see. No one from the public. Entertainer motion for the public portion. Motion. In favor?
Aye.
All right, cabinet. Next, the vote for discussion, council.
Nothing at this time, Mr. Speaker. Nothing at this time.
No?
Nothing.
I tell some council. Entertainer motion for the public. Motion.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
That's it. Good evening. This is City Pleasantville City Council, regular meeting. Today's date is December the fourth, twenty twenty three, the time is seven oh four P. M. This meeting has been duly advertised in the city's newspaper and conforms with the public public media name, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. It was a police state application and flag. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, as on earth as it is in heaven. Fearless, standing, updating the bread, forgiving those trespassers, as we forgive those trespassers against us. Lead us not to temptation, but to salvation. For the king, power, and glory of the Father. Let us be agents to the flag of the United States of America, and to the glory of which stands one nation, only God, indivisible, with no end, just as God. Pro.
Davenport.
Present.
D'Amelio. Thomas. Present. Camona.
Present.
Korea.
Present.
Barclay.
Present.
Sis trump.
Entertainer motion to discuss with the meeting of the minutes.
Motion.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
That's it. Mayor for a combination proclamation.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, first is orders twenty six, second reading, public care required, vacating portion of Ansley Boulevard pursuant to Lake Bay redevelopment plan as amended.
Okay, this is second reading. Anyone who wishes to speak on this, this ordinance and this ordinance along with this conference. Entertainer motion for the public portion.
Motion.
Public here, man. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Entertainer motion. Motion. Entertainer motion. Motion. Second.
Davenport.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Orders number twenty seven, second reading, public care required, dedicating certain public lands located in the city known as block two, one hundred forty five, lot ten. Motion.
Second. Oh, public portion again.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Public care.
Public hearing again. Public hearing again. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak or miss ordinance? This ordinance along, one time at the mic, three minutes at the mic.
Tim Jones, Pleasantville. Simple question, what is the location of the property you just mentioned?
It's right there on your agenda, at one forty two East Bay U. L.
Excuse me, I just want to be sure also, that's going down Franklin Boulevard, that's opening up that area, my career. So you got it, Mr. Jones, you understand?
Anyone else? Number one, entertainer motion for the public portion. Let me public here.
Motion.
Second. Entertainer motion to the public.
Motion.
Second.
Rokol Davenport.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Ordinance adopted. Ordinance, I'm sorry, resolution one hundred sixty one, extended the hours of the sale for primary retail distribution liquor licenses on December the twenty fourth and thirty first of twenty twenty three.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Rokol Davenport.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Resolution approved. Next, I need approval for the bill was, motion even?
Motion. Second.
Rokol Davenport.
Yes.
Thomas. Yes, on everything was six, 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 six. Okay, what page is that on now? Page five. Page five.
We need to change the number on it.
Camona.
Yes.
Korea.
Yes.
Barclay.
Yes.
Sis trump.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is public portion.
Next is public portion. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak? One time at the mic or three minutes. And I have that.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to.
What's your name?
Oh, Dan Parek, ideal institute of technology, and I don't get a chance to say hi to everybody at the same time and update on our progress on both projects. So I thought it's a good idea to come and share. And it's been two years we acquired trust on the dining city building. We have completed the renovation of existing building and we're ready to open as soon as the planning board approve the site plan. I'm going back and forth with the planning board, hopefully not tomorrow, we're not on a schedule, but on the nineteenth, I was told that it's going to be on a schedule and that site plan approved, then we're going to be able to apply to the C E O. Even though the building is administrative, so I put a request for inspection of the building to start using as an administrative building because I was told that the whole site plan is to be approved before we occupy the building. So we're in that process. As promised, in South Jersey, now we have a robot level South Jersey in Pleasantville. That's a very big deal. It's a Dallas based company, fifteen year old company who is doing a commercial robots, and we host it as a part of our incubator. So we have a territory from Townshiver to Cape May. We have a restaurant serving robot, cleaning robot, assisted living, a human roid. So actually, commercial robots, that's not replacing the jobs, but aiding to the entry level jobs to make it better and easy. And we did that, and I thank the Councilman Barclay and Ms. Thomas and Mayor to support. And we did the ribbon cutting, and now we're going to be doing the training and providing that services. We have two casinos interested in a robotics bar with a robotics arm that we're negotiating the contract that our students will build. So the way, the reason that I'm sharing that is we had a dream to bring high end national level companies to Pleasantville, and this is just the beginning. We're going to have a second floor of a press building, now ideal building, as an incubator, and we have a lot more company interested in coming. So I wanted to thank the council, mayor, B A, and a whole community for supporting us and having us in Pleasantville. Also, city center project, we have a couple estimates for Aspasus is ready, and our redevelopment agreement is in a process. Then we're ready to demo and build. Same thing as the Press of Atlantic City Building area also, we're ready to build the manufacturing facility and aquatic system. So as soon as we get approval, we're ready to start construction. So I just wanted to share that we love Pleasantville and I appreciate everybody's support. Happy holidays, I thank you.
Great question. Sure, please.
Yep, I do.
Go ahead.
I guess this is for Joel. So the planning board meeting, is it tomorrow?
Let me get the microphone. The planning board meeting, there is a scheduled meeting for December the fifth on the agenda, but there were some issues and not to really, you know, belabor the point here, but we're trying to get a meeting together for tomorrow night because it wasn't, it was advertised, but there was some discrepancy about whether there was anything to be moved, you know, on the agenda. So we're going to try to pull a meeting together and then, you know, I've heard friends say that there's a meeting on the nineteenth. I don't think that's been established yet, at least I haven't been. Doesn't mean that it's not in the works, but it could happen. We're trying to make that happen to move this project ahead. But as far as tomorrow night, if we have a quorum, it would be to open up that meeting and then announce a special meeting if that can be pulled together because we're approaching the holidays, we don't always get people available. So we're hoping we'll have a quorum to do this, let's say, the week before Christmas.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer, is that?
Yes.
Did I confuse you or?
No, no, I'm not confused.
I just have a question about the process and how this is done. Because I hear you saying that the planning board is now approving the site plans after all the work is done? Like, is that like a little off? Like, should the site plans be already approved by the planning board before he does the work?
Yeah, normally, I don't, I really don't know what he's.
I mean, it just doesn't sound, it sounds backwards to me.
Yeah, that's, I'm not really prepared to answer that, council, because I don't know what he's done and what he's had ability and permit to do.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Normally, there would be no building permit issued until the site plan was approved and the conditions of the approval were met, and then the building office would first would get zoning, you know, see that zoning approval is established, followed by building approval, building permits, codes, et cetera. So I don't know, maybe he can explain what he's talking about. All I know is that they're coming in for an amended site plan to expand their building right with the, you know, temporary, not a temporary, but a greenhouse.
Yeah, greenhouse and so.
And a workshop.
The site plan is for the redevelopment of the whole site, but we actually had renovation and modification of the interior of the existing building. We finished that, but we cannot open the building until the entire site plan is approved. That's what I was told. So that's what we're waiting on to get on our agenda.
I'm just asking that question because I don't want to see you held up and honestly, it just doesn't seem like it's being done in the right order, so.
Well, there was, council, I will tell you, I think there was, maybe bear this out, there was some misunderstanding about the number of sets of plans that were supposed to be delivered to Ms. Stewart and her office so that the planning board members were given the plans in sufficient time. There was a need for electronic version of the application. Some of these just sort of fell through the cracks, not on the city's part. So we're, again, we're working to try to help move this project. It's been a long time in coming, and so we're trying to get.
Well, hopefully in the future, like, we can have a little bit more communication between the planning board and the city because, you know, it seems like we're totally separate. We've asked this before on numerous occasions about a little bit more communication so that we know what's going on because this is totally out of the blue and I talked to him coming in here today, really didn't make much sense.
Can I make a comment? Councilman Davenport, maybe I can invite you to our next planning development meeting and we can go over some things.
Anybody else?
Well, where do you get the idea to do all, the idea, you get the idea to do all the things that you guys have been doing at the school? Where'd you see it? Where'd you get it? How'd you gather it?
So the robot labs is, I was in a Vegas.
And not just, just everything?
It's just, I'm too passionate about creating a unique model. The biggest thing that we do at Idea is a social impact programming, and if you wanted to break the cycle, it's only possible with the education, employment, and entrepreneurship. Most of the time, there is a lot of grant funded program and people are getting the grants and then they spend and then they go back to the same recycle of the poverty. So what we're trying to do is the only way to break a cycle is to get a proper education and a job. So we always think about how we can provide that opportunity where it's not just a hand out, but are not given philosophy. So it's, it's working for us so far, and I'm expecting at least sixteen international company next year coming to Pleasantville when we open our incubator.
I applaud you, and no model that you've seen that you could say, let me call you up and say, these are the things that we're doing or want to do, how did you do that? Nobody to call up, just your team and your ideas.
Yeah, we are now forty eight team members, full time employee with Idea and its affiliates, and now we're getting an invitation, like, we partner with the Passaic High School to provide a similar C T E work based learning. Jersey City High School, we're doing the same thing, so we're getting invitations statewide to partner with the school districts and with the C T E programs.
But, you know, I don't know if the community or people really understand how big this is and how much of an opportunity that you've brought and your team have brought to this community, and I just applaud you for it. The guys are getting on everything, getting things done the way you wanted.
Yes, first of all, again, echo what he just said, thank you for looking out for our youth because that's the most important thing in our city right now, to make, get them some type of advancement. But have you communicated with the high school and the school system, the city?
Yes, we work, we work very closely with the Pleasantville High School. I, I'm very happy and supportive of a high school supporting us. We just had a conversation with the six youngsters to come into our school from Pleasantville High School. So we're working very closely with the high school.
I'm sorry, I should have asked Mr. Chapman, right?
Yeah. Him and I, we work closely with the high school. And I, we have now seven thousand square foot event space in building. So as soon as we're open, I would want you guys to utilize it. It's available to Pleasantville anytime, always. We have a video wall, two hundred chairs, the video production facility. I would like you guys to come and visit. I think you guys did the tour.
Yes.
Before the build out, now I would like to invite you guys and see what our students have done.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I didn't know, I'm glad you showed up. You threw me off, I didn't know who you were the first time.
I, I had a turkey for a few weeks and more than hair. Thank you.
Next, J K and J.
Jerry King, gentlemen, this is City Pleasantville. Good evening, everybody, you have the holidays. Thanks for your service and your time. I know it's not an easy job. I just had a couple of quick questions for the council. And understand something, you know, a lot of people say I'm a hard guy to deal with, and that's true, but it's just because of how I was raised and, you know, reinforced by the military to do things right, you know, to make sure everything's level and square. Because a house is built on a shaky foundation, it will eventually collapse. It's just a matter of time. It's not a matter of if, it's just a matter of when. So when I'm asking you these questions and I'm giving you what you think is a hard time is because I want to make sure what you guys are doing is level and square, that's all, because otherwise it's, it's going to be a detriment to the city. And as far as that, I see you have, I see you guys are moving forward with the project down Lake Bay, which is, which is a good thing. And I see you passed the ordinance for vacating the city, I mean, vacating the street there, Ansley Boulevard. My question is about jurisdiction. You know, whenever you're doing anything in law, or actually in life, you need to make sure you have jurisdiction. In Latin, juris is right, diction means word. In Latin, juris is right, diction means words. You know, the right words in court can send you away, the wrong words in court can send you away for a long time. The right words in court can set you free. The wrong words in life can get you in a lot of trouble. The right words can make sure everything is level and square, as I was talking about. And I'm just wondering how, well, the organization that myself, Mr. Jones, and 98 other people in this city represent Pleasantville Concerned Citizens, we're concerned about this project that it's a good thing that the city is doing some development. It's a great thing, it's a phenomenal thing. And I applaud the gentleman for what he's doing. I was involved with you for many, many, many years and that's a great thing. However, the Bible says unless a man strives lawfully, he strives in vain. So my question is, if you're not abiding by the New Jersey Constitution, if you're a violation of U.S. Code 1983 for deprivation of rights, if you're operating outside of the realm of your limited jurisdiction, your limited delegation of authority that was bestowed to you by we the people, may I remind you, how can you move forward? I mean, we sent an affidavit to Ms. Thompson over two months ago.
Thomas.
I meant Ms. Thomas, I apologize. And on the leave, it was emailed to everybody on the city council, saying that the Pleasantville Concerned Citizens, a group of 100 people, are requesting to be heard on this project. And we haven't been heard. And we have a semi-defunct organization, sometimes on, sometimes off organization that supposedly represents us with this nice lady on the paperwork as, I don't know, the only member, the primary member, the sole member, I don't know. She doesn't represent me. She doesn't represent the 100 people in this organization. So my question is back to jurisdiction. How can you lawfully move forward if the people have not been heard? You can't. And I understand you guys have a certain way that you're used to doing things, right? Just moving it over and pushing it through. But that doesn't make it right if it's not lawful. I'm waiting for an answer to the question, that's all.
Answer to that question, which you said, you said awful lot about Mr. King.
I said, how can you move forward? How can you justify if you don't have jurisdiction? How can you move forward? And you can't.
So, so, Councilwoman President. Mr. King, and I hate to kind of kick the can down the road, this isn't my project, so I'm not familiar with all the nuances. I don't recall seeing the letter that you sent, which discussed lack of jurisdiction, therefore I don't know exactly what you mean as far as jurisdiction. 1983 is deprivation of rights. It is a remedy, but it is for pattern and practice custom and policy of public entities. So I'm not sure what specifically you're talking about, but the redevelopment attorney is here and there was also a public hearing at which point that is when the public is entitled to be heard. If you'd like to read your letter or ask the redevelopment attorney and maybe he can narrow that down because unfortunately, the past, and I believe it was the second reading today, and during the public portion, no one came forward to talk about it.
Man, we expressed our displeasure with it all along throughout the stage and we were ignored. We expressed the desire to meet, as, as the, as the New Jersey law states, that there's supposed to be a community-based organization that meets with the developer so that the developer can implement ideas and inputs and insights from that community-based organization, not an organization that houses only city employees and city council persons.
Are you talking about the whole spyglass program in totality or just the vacation of this Ansley Boulevard today?
I'm talking about the whole project in totality. This is, this is one of, this is, this is one of the steps. But, I mean, I brought it up because I see you moving forward. So I'm wondering how you're moving forward if you don't have jurisdiction? If it's not both?
Sir, I, you're, I'm not gonna be able to answer that question because I've never seen a document that raises jurisdictional issue. Specifically, when you say jurisdiction, meaning what? And frankly, without any preparation, I wouldn't be able to answer that. But if you have specifics about what the jurisdiction requires, because it's not 1983, then you'd have to be able to express that to us and perhaps, and I'm not saying that he would, perhaps the redevelopment attorney could express some opinion to the extent that it was not infringing on attorney-client privilege or work product.
Well, it was all laid out in that affidavit, very clear. I don't know, I just, can you get a copy of it? I have another copy of it if you would like.
I think that I saw a letter that was sent. I did see that. I do not recall a jurisdictional issue being raised, which essentially would mean that the city did not have the legal right to move forward because it didn't have jurisdiction over the property, over the, the planning board, over whatever it was. I don't recall seeing anything to that effect. I do remember seeing a letter from Pleasantville Concerned Citizens, but it really was dealing more in the realm of remedial action after they voted on the spyglass project.
No, it was not. I have a copy ready and I'll give it to you. But at the end of the day, if you can address it, I can briefly address your question.
There's absolutely, and I know you're concerned and you want to be heard, I understand all that, and you should be. There was an opportunity to be heard as Sister indicated, there was a full hearing on the spyglass project, there was planning board hearings on the spyglass project tonight. There were ordinances that were open to public input, there wasn't any. I can assure council that everything that has been done under, while I've been on the watch, was done with full appropriate jurisdiction. Absolutely, without any doubt, the jurisdiction of the city over the streets, absolute, per New Jersey law. I haven't seen anything, there's been no legal documents filed that I've been served as council or, I don't know about Sister, Sister's got it. No legal documents have been proffered with the court to challenge any ordinance that's been adopted by this council. So that's why I can say with absolute assurance that jurisdiction was bona fide. It was this council, the mayor, board totally, let's say, imbued with the proper jurisdiction to vote on the projects and all these other ancillary matters like the financial agreement, these ordinances that were launched. So just want you to know that would be our position.
Well, the reason legal documents weren't filed is because we were trying to avoid that, because all that's gonna do is cost the city money. So this letter was kind of a soft way to say, hey, let's sit down and talk about it so we can avoid that. But we are prepared to do that if necessary. But we were trying to avoid that. But we were ignored. And we came out, we expressed our displeasure all throughout the process. And we were ignored. And I have a copy of the letter. Either of you need an affidavit. And it does raise everyone those specific issues. Maybe you're busy, you may have time, if you stand.
No, I, I read everything that comes before me, sir. I'm never too busy for my client. Anything that lands on my desk, I read it. So if it lands before me, I read it.
Okay. How ready is this? Mr. Jones?
Good evening, again, everyone. Good evening. I'm just here to, firstly, I really do appreciate hearing so much progress going on with the different projects, like the Park Avenue building, it's owned by some church vacant for ages. It would be excellent idea to have those cities centering that position, as well as a few other things. It really sounds good to hear things working in Pleasantville. And one of the items that we discussed, and I heard last city council meeting, you mentioned the rent control, that you are working on it. And as we research things and we're trying to share information, I came about a spreadsheet on the DCA, New Jersey DCA's website, and it shows that there are 118 municipalities in New Jersey that do have rent control ordinances. This is a 24-page spreadsheet, I just have the first page here to show you. But it's a 24-page spreadsheet available and I'll email it to everyone. It shows you the municipality, starting Middle Atlantic City, or Second Atlantic City, which has a rent control ordinance. And it also shows you how it's governed, what kind of agency did, most of them have that we boards established that actually facilitate the rent control operations. And also, on the same spreadsheet, we have all the links to all the ordinances. Click one and you'll see any municipality's rent control ordinance. So it's really not that difficult to kind of like copy and paste, you know? Because a lot of things are done that way in reality. And I think that would be something just to consider in terms of expediting that process. Also, here contact information in every municipality, who you can contact as far as their rent control ordinances. And, and one key column here that I would like to focus on is the number of structures. When you do consider rent control orders, please consider, just as Atlantic City does, that it goes for one unit plus, some of them three unit plus. In other words, you'd have to have a building with three units in it before the rent control ordinance could apply. Pleasantville has a lot of rents, rental units that are home, single-family houses. So please, when you do consider the rent control ordinance, give consideration to that one-plus units and that, because that would be an important thing to focus on. And that's all I have to say.
Motion to close by force.
We have Mr. Fleish, Mr. Genette. I just want to ask you guys a question about the community benefits agreement that goes along the project that we're talking about. His name is Peyton. You know, I'm on top of trying to make sure that things are going correctly there. So can you give us an update on where we're at with that or how it's going so that, you know, the public can be aware of what's going on with that agreement? Or have we addressed it at all?
Now that the financial agreement is fully signed, we're in the period to finalize the CBA. And as a matter of fact, jumping on something I'm gonna be working on tomorrow, actually, I have to get in touch with Mrs. Peyton, there's a couple of holes in the agreement and I just want to follow up with her because I need some input on that in order to send that document over to the attorney for the development, for the redevelopment. But that document is essentially done, there's just some things we need to, some information we need to put in.
Is there any way we could, so that we could, you know, maybe the council could see it before it goes out?
Well, it's actually an attachment to, it was an attachment to the financial agreement, but nothing has changed. The only thing that I'm feeling, there really is some rather, yeah, nothing significant material, things like, you know, contact information, that type of thing.
But the doc. I addressed some other issues with that. I'm sorry to, you know, stop. Sure. But there were some other things that we wanted to put in there. I just wanted to make sure that those things were implemented within that.
Sure. I have a problem sharing that.
Sending over.
Okay, no problem.
Well, we're still within the 60, it wasn't a 60.
It hasn't even, I mean, it's just starting.
So it's a 60-day period.
We're willing.
Which, yeah.
Well, yes.
That was my next question.
So we're moving ahead with that. Just so you know. Yep. Oh, I did say the motion to close by force. Motion. Second. Your favor. All right. Let's have it. Thanks, it's kind of nice for also. There were.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank you all for coming out. Grant, I'm looking forward to the robots. And I'm looking forward to what you said in your building, you know, in Center City because we've been trying to get a banquet hall for some time now. So at least in the meantime, you know, I appreciate you extending what you do, you know, the room that you do have until we can do better. I'd like to thank everyone that came out to our senior citizen Christmas party this weekend and went to Wonderland and it was a success. Thankful for the donations, for all those that, you know, that helped and just supported our efforts. And City Hall, we have a box that WEHA has for toy giveaway. They usually give away toys at North Main Street School. And this year, they're extending and they're going all the schools in the district and they're setting boxes up at different locations. And the one that we have at City Hall, they're asking for you to give donations, any unwrapped gift that you have, for obvious reasons, just, you know, don't wrap the gift, just put it in there as many as you can and just spread the word for us to be able to, you know, help Bill Hawks with his efforts. And I think that's about that. Oh, I want to thank AARP for helping with the, went to Wonderland last week. We had to move it inside due to the weather and they were kind enough to come out and serve all the youth and with the bike giveaway. Want to say happy Hanukkah to everyone, this is from the December 7th to the 15th. And that'll be before Christmas season, so I'll see you all at Christmas season and wish you that and happy Hanukkah. That's it, thank you.
Counselwoman.
Congratulations, Mayor, on a successful senior event this far day. And also, the Winter Wonderland was a great success. We gave out over 50 bikes and helmets. The kids and parents had a chance to see Santa Claus in a elf. And thank you to the rec and public works for making sure that these two events happened. They set up for it. Actually, they had to set up one event and then go to the next event since the weather was bad in rec center. So I guess I'll see you all too, please, the next evening.
Yes, I just want to say, I'm glad that the Winter Wonderland thing was a success. Actually, I didn't make it and I was up in New York. I watched my grandson participate in his first collegiate track. And he did very well, ended up qualifying for the nationals. So, as grandpa, I was not happy to see that happen. But I apologize to the public for not being here and that's it.
Say everybody good night. Thank you for coming out. God bless you. Hope to see you in a couple of weeks. God bless. Take care.
Counselwoman. I want to join my colleagues and thank you very much. Those schedules didn't allow me, but I heard from a lot of people it was successful. And I want to thank you very much. Ryan, I want to thank you very much for what you've done in our community. I was one of the who was there to watch it. President was very impressive. So I want to encourage you that Pleasantville is open, spreading news. We are creating a better environment for investment. Let the world know about Pleasantville. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And thank you all for coming out today, Grant. Thank you for the update. That was really informative. Really happy for what's going on there. I can't wait to see it all, you know, open to the public and come to fruition. I want to thank CME for a great report, guys, two pages of pure movement of our city. We should be proud of what we're all doing up here in the administration as well. And I want to thank you all for also coming out, raising your concerns. Good night.
Counselwoman President. I think it's important that I mention, we did murals that each year, the schools do murals to, which is anything from Winter Wonderland. And what we did this year was the first time that we did it in over two years. Am I right? Yeah, we haven't had it since COVID. So this year, the winners were Washington Avenue was first place, South Main Street School was second place, and Future Leaders were third place, honorable mention. So they worked really, really hard and the murals were really nice, but I think it's worth mentioning their hard work. So some of them, it looks like the art teacher did it, but I know it was the students. They were really, really nice. And I want to thank Councilwoman Famulara and Thomas for helping serve the day of senior citizens. And Peyton, it was just a group effort. Thank you. Yes. Thank you, Councilwoman President.
We are going into executive session after this. Okay. Well, I do have one question. I know we had talked about the forensic audit and I just want to ask myself, is that going out yet or not?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
All right. God bless the city. I want to thank you all for coming out. You always listen to your concerns. Your concerns is ours. Again, my hat's off to you again, Grant, for what you're doing on there with the school because, you know, the entrepreneurship part of giving people that, giving kids the middle of the dream early in life and showing them the pathway, that's just beautiful. I can remember our graduation, I was taken back at the graduation, I know it's just gonna go from this point forward. With that being said, is there any? I entertain a motion to adjourn, but also, how would I do that? But I still think we need to go into the.
Then you can adjourn. If you want.
With that being said, is there any need to? I entertain a motion to adjourn, but also, how would I do that? But I still think you need to go into executive.
Then you can adjourn. If you want to go into executive session and you're asked for a motion, go into executive session for the purposes for which you were going into executive session. So if it's contract, if it's legal, whatever the purpose is.
I entertain a motion to go into executive session for a couple of legal questions that we have amongst ourselves. I thank you as a public, we've always wanted to stay, but we're going to motion to go into executive session. Motion. All in favor? You might go into executive session.
City council is in executive session discussing contractual matters, which remains confidential and privileged until which time the public has a need to know about it.
Thank you. Okay. And now, I think we all made our comments, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Oh, to adjourn a meeting? All right, well, I do have one question. Mr. Peyton, I was, me and Councilman, we were talking and would it be okay if we set up a committee meeting? I know it's on the desk, it's okay now since he's the chair. But we want to set up a committee meeting for, obviously, for Wednesday, 2:00, is that good with you? Because I have some issues we need to discuss. It doesn't matter, it's up to you. Is that okay with you, Mr. Peyton?
Are here committee people here?
Yes.
Are you guys there? What time?
4:00.
I'm sorry, what time?
4:00.
Wednesday? So I'll have Karen send that out?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And I have some things, I'm going to call you tomorrow and let you know that I want to discuss.
I take a motion to.
Motion.
Exactly. What was this?
I also want to say happy birthday to my wife, her birthday is tomorrow.
Happy birthday, son.
Happy birthday, son. All the day for Wednesday.